Development Authority Special Call Meeting for January 26, 2020. I am the Chair, Lisa Murphy. This morning's meeting is being conducted electronically and is allowed based on the Governor's State of Emergency Declaration for COVID-19. This meeting, as indicated, is being broadcast live and is being recorded. The City of Virginia Beach Development Authority will consider only essential business items and begin with public comments on authority business. Anyone who registered online to participate in the virtual meeting with Vicki Kelly will be called in the order in which they signed up. Speakers, please identify yourself when you begin your comments. After all speakers have spoken, the Chair will ask for any comments from authority members. The Chair will then recognize the authority members in the order in which they raised their virtual hands. Once discussion is over, the Chair will then move to the next item listed on the published agenda until all items on the agenda have been considered. All votes will be by roll call and recorded in the minutes. As this is the Authority's first fully electronic public meeting, and in order to ensure a successful live electronic event, the following meeting instructions must be followed. All citizens who wish to provide public comments will be called by name prior to being allowed to speak. Once called upon, each speaker will have three minutes to make their comments. Again, please identify yourself when you begin your comments. There will be no question and answer interchange during the meeting. Once your name is called, please wait two to three seconds before beginning your comments to ensure we hear your complete remarks. If the speaker does not respond, or if a technical issue occurs which renders the comments unintelligible, we will move on to the next registered speaker. Authority Discussion. It's important that authority members hold their comments until recognized. Again, the Chair will recognize the authority members in the order in which they raise their virtual hand. Members of the Authority, are there any questions about the process? Hearing none, thank you. I'll go ahead and turn to our agenda. As we start our meetings normally, we'll start with public comment. The floor is open to speak with a three-minute limit. Do we have anybody?
Madam Chair?
Yep.
We need to start with a roll call of the authority members.
Okay. All right, let's go with a roll call. Go ahead, Vicki.
And if you would, when I call your name, please unmute your own mic at the time you're getting ready to speak, please. David Byrne?
Yes.
William Brown?
Yes.
William Brunkie? William Brunkie?
I saw him. I saw him. He may be on mute.
William Brunkie?
Mr. Brunkie is on the call. He appears to be having some audio issues. I noticed he was having trouble hearing us a moment ago.
Okay. Nekka Chiazor?
Yes.
Thank you. Taylor Franklin? I don't see Penny. Lisa Murphy?
Right here.
Mike Standing?
Yes.
Joseph Strange?
Yes.
Yuen Trivisen Seal?
Yes.
And Dot Wood? Thank you.
All right, now I think we can move on to public comments. Vicki, it sounds like there's no one signed up to speak.
No one, ma'am.
All right, we'll move on then to review of the meeting minutes from the December 15, 2020 meeting. Can I get a motion? Meeting minutes? Sounds like we just had a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Who made the motion?
William Brown.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Or actually, we've got to do a roll call, right?
We've got to do a roll call.
David Byrne? William Brown?
Yes.
William Brunkie?
Phil Sack is not hearing anything for some reason.
I just unmuted Mr. Brunkie. I'll come back to Mr. Brunkie. Nekka Chiazor?
Yes.
Taylor Franklin?
Yes.
And Penny Morgan is not here. Lisa Murphy?
Yes.
Mike Standing?
Yes.
Joe Strange?
Yes.
Yuen Trivisen Seal?
Yes.
And Dot Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Brunkie, are you able to hear us now?
All right, having approved the meeting minutes, let's move on to review of financial position.
Hello, this is Sean Murphy, Development Authority Accountant, speaking. Vicki, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, we'll get started. This is the presentation of the December cash inflows and outflows for the Development Authority. Devin, you can go to the next slide.
Gotcha.
We'll begin with the operating account activity. Over $4.5 million of operating funds on hand. Fortunately for cash receipts and dispersments, more routine items you'll see here. Over $40,000 of adjusted revenue bond fees collected in the month of December, as well as just over $1,100 of interest income we have on the checking account of the operating fund. For your dispersments, touch fund a few items. We have our reaccurving Global Links conduit management fee, over $13,000. That's a one-month fee going out. We also had another partial billing come in from the city's external auditors, Clifton, Larson, Allen. As you may recall, they had issued their financial opinion for the Authority back in September, and so we have a trailing bill related to that prior year audit being completed. After those, for those significant dispersments, we'll see ending cash at the end of the month, Devin, you can go to the next slide. I'll cover the incentive program again. We're going through the month of December, inflows and outflows. Over $6.5 million of cash on hand. For our receipts, we had a drawdown of CARES Act money. This is the cash when we actually have received it from the city, over $800,000 coming in. A little bit of interest being earned on the checking account we maintain, just under $700. And then for our cash receipts, we're showing on a cash basis these transactions. We have two checks either that were lost in the mail or destroyed, where we had to cancel the check, have a stop payment done, and then a reissue. So this shows the return of the money, over $75,000 has been returned, and those amounts were then distributed in the columns I'll go over, or the rows I'll go over shortly here. For your cash dispersments, over $700,000 of Part A awards. On your tablets through Google Drive, you have the detailed listing of the different companies who receive their payments. This will be the chart that shows Steel, In Motion Hosting, Wilmec, BMZ USA, as well as the Prufrex slash VDP payment that occurred. Below that, for Part E dispersments, we had close to $150,000 of the city's COVID response going out. There'll be another separate chart on your Google Drive showing who those recipients were, 21 different grant recipients receiving their payment. Below that, over $1.5 million CARES Act money was also then redistributed. So this was all the money we had received by December, going back out the door. And again, also, there's a separate chart on Google Drive displaying the 136 different grant recipients who received those payments. Below that, close to $400,000 for dome site legal fees and expenses that were issued. Payments going out to Singer Davis, Hanbury, Live Nation, and Cooper Carey. And then finally, just to highlight for the BioInitiative, we've got another month's rent being paid on the accelerator, as well as a encroachment fee at the Innovation Park. So that's over $11,000 coming out of the BioInitiative funding. So you'll see your ending cash, over $4.6 million on hand. Devin, you can go to the next slide. And this is the slide where we'll reconcile that cash on hand to available EDIP. So we adjusted the receivables and the commitments, so you're looking at over $1,725,895 for our estimate of available EDIP as of the end of 2020.
Any questions for Sean? Again, good practice. If you have a question, raise your virtual hand. It should be a little box in the right-hand corner that looks like a hand, but it's different if you're on an Apple device. All right, hearing none. Vicki, Bill Brunkie was able to dial in on a mobile phone, so he's, I think, going to be audio-only. Alex, do we need to do a, do we need to have a vote on the financials? No vote, okay. All right, then we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is request for approval of facility logics management agreement. David, can you listen on that?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair. Give Devin a couple seconds here, buddy. As you mentioned, we have the management very meaningful facility logics ahead of you this morning. Devin, next slide, please. With that, we have the disclosures as represented. The consultant, Pat Lera, being Lynn Cooper, Ashley Nguyen is on the line in case any questions come up today. The architect is Hanbury, and their team also includes Pace and Winch Meekins. The contractors, Wyatt and Turner, and the property owner is Olympia Development. Next slide, please, Devin. The purpose of the project is to develop the bio lab space, and as we have worked with BioInitiative over the last several years, the lab space is biosafety level-two compatible, and it's also the next step in the initiation of our bio industry sector. It's located at Convergence 2 off Bendix Road. The space is approximately 5,700 square feet of space. When we originally took possession of it, it was an empty shell and construction is currently underway. The consultant is working, that we're working with, is Facility Logics, as mentioned, and that's for the developing space and this accelerator program. They have assisted us with the conceptual assessment, the design build, also the equipment fill-out, and also the ongoing management, which we're talking about today. Next slide, please, Devin. Back up, please. Here are some conceptual images, which you have seen in the past. Just wanted to refresh your memory of what the space will look like when finished being constructed. Give you a second to look at that. Next slide, Devin, please. And just to refresh your memory, this is a space layout, and the green space is the lab space. The, I guess, the aqua-colored space is the conference room space, and the tan-colored space is office space, and the purple-looking space is a common area space. You'll see some hash marks within this space where there are two tones in certain offices. That's so we can have as much flexibility in the pick-up as we possibly can and flip those spaces to whatever the need is, office or lab. And you'll see we tried to program as much as we could in this tight space, so there's minimal core space associated with this lab developed. Next slide, please, Devin. Just a quick glimpse of the construction schedules. We're getting close to the end. I did want to go back and look at the whole thing, but you will see the red areas on there where we're meeting our timeline of being finished by the end of January. There's a couple outstanding items to be finished in February, but it doesn't preclude us from moving forward, as I can see in the February timeline. Next slide, please, Devin. Here's something that I thought was probably interesting to show you guys. This is a software called Instruction Site, and we'll be pushing this out to you at the, probably on Wednesday after they do the next shoot. But what it is, because we can't get you into the space because of the COVID restrictions and whatnot, as the project has been going on, we have been taking video of the various locations within the lab space as it's been constructed. I think there's approximately 20 different locations within the lab, and there are 360 images associated with that, so we'll push that out to you. It's a web-based view, and you can go on there and click on these various sites and see what the lab looks like in this latest form. Devin, next slide, please. And here's just a quick image of what that instruction view looks like, and you'll see the construction currently underway within the space. This one's a little dated, and we'll give you the most current image, or the link to the most current image, right after this meeting, probably on Wednesday when they do their next shoot. Next slide, please, Devin. So we've been working with Facility Logics and the consultant, or the consultant Facility Logics on the agreement over the course of the last couple of years. The consultant service agreement, which is concluded, which was the assessment of needs, and we're done with that phase. We're currently under the FEED Development Agreement phase, which will be concluded in February, and that includes the bidding, design, and construction, which we're done with that side of it. The ongoing build-out and oversight management of the construction, which is currently going underway, and also the equipment procurement process for the equipment that's going to be located within the space. We're here before you today to talk about the property management agreement, that is the ongoing facility management associated with the space, and also the accelerator program to be developed as we move forward, and that would start in February. Next slide, please, Devin. So the management agreement, as I mentioned, does two different things. One, the ongoing management of the property, and also the development of the accelerator program. And as I mentioned, it'll start at the conclusion of the FEED Development Agreement and kick off in February. That is a one-year agreement with three one-year options, and that's going to be, it will include the space management, ongoing construction needs as those may come up, accounting, financial, audit structure, and those services associated with it, staffing, equipment purchasing, and disposable, and management of equipment and calibration. The license agreement for the tenants, which I guess you could refer to as a form of a lease. The operating budget, which we'll go with that in just a second. There are reimbursable expenses associated with the operating budget, and the Development Authority will have to participate financially to balance that budget. It will also include the standing operating procedures associated with it, and as I mentioned, the programming for the accelerator itself. The compensation for this, for Facility Logics, is $5,500 a month, and that will go through June of 2022. At that time, they can elect to switch from a straight monthly service rate to a service rate plus a percentage of revenues, which that would be net revenues, so their rate would drop from $5,500 to $5,000 plus a percentage of revenues. And that, they could start that July 1 of '22. Next slide, please, Devin. The programming associated with the management agreement is the ongoing programming for its tenants, and also the other stakeholders that we have within the community can also possibly participate. That will include mentoring opportunities, access to capital opportunities, VCs, grants, loans, and whatnot, sponsorship opportunities within the space, networking functions such as lunch and learns, keynote speakers, open houses and receptions, research collaboration with such organizations, and that GBio, and the GBio Connect Program, and tap into other networking opportunities possible with other universities in the market, access to professional services such as accounting and legal services, purchasing programs associated with that. Virginia Bio has one, some of the universities have them. Also, international organizations could be affiliated with us. We have some international organizations we work with. Talent recruitment and development, virtual memberships, and also the marketing advisement. The ED staff will do the primary marketing, but we will lean off Facility Logics for consultational technical stuff, and also their network of folks they work with. We're going to try and maintain as much flexibility in the program as we can to see what the industry needs are and what their tenant needs are. Next slide, please, Devin. Here's a quick snapshot of the budget, and I know it's very tight for you guys to read on this screen. Just some highlights. Lab rates for rentals will be $22, $25 a square foot or $22 a square foot, depending on if it's wet lab space or dry lab space. In-office rents will be $20 a square foot, and that's the basic components of that. We also have some conference room rental rates and some affiliate rental rates and whatnot, and I would bring you down to the expenditure side. The first line on there is the compensation for Facility Logics at $66,000 projected for the annual compensation for them, for their services going forward, and there are a variety of associated management experiences, expenses associated with it, and that brings our budget to approximately $192,000, $193,000 in expenses associated with it for the first coming year. And I would take a pause here to tell you that as part of the agreement that we have with them, annually, they have to come to us with a revised budget to project out for the next year, and because we're in a partial fiscal year, we're going to come back to you in approximately three months to revisit a revised budget, and that will tick off on July 1. So this is a budget show, and projecting for the next five years, but we'll revisit this again in a few months. You can ask for your approval for that. Next slide, please, Devin. So we're here today, I have a question, your approval for a resolution authorizing the Chair to enter into a management agreement with Facility Logics for the ongoing management of the GBeach bio lab space as presented to you. I'd be glad to try to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, David. I'm looking to see if anybody's got their virtual hand raised. Not seeing any. See, David, this is essentially a property management agreement. I've got a couple of questions. How many square feet are they managing for us?
5,700 square feet is the lab space.
Okay.
It's the property management and the ongoing programming associated with it. So you may be familiar with different accelerator programs, incubator programs throughout the community, so they're not only going to just manage the physical space and the day-to-day operational of it, but also assist companies that are in there with a variety of programming opportunities.
And I noticed licensing or leasing is one of their responsibilities. Do we have a broker involved? Is it our broker or is it their broker? How's that working?
They will be actually doing the leasing agreements for us with our participation. So if a tenant was to express interest in locating and filling an application, we evaluate if that company is a fit for the space that we have available, and that's with our concurrence and theirs, and from that point, then Facility Logics will actually do the physical legal documentation of that.
And Madam Chair, if I can jump in, one thing to note, every tenant in this space will effectively be a sub to us, so we have not contemplated involving a broker at this point, also given the specificity of this use and the likelihood that the majority of the tenants that we bring to the space will be out of market, that our team is recruiting. We did not contemplate that a broker was needed at this point. That said, we'll certainly monitor that and keep you posted as we work through.
Well, I was just wondering if we should expect quarterly or monthly reporting on the status of the, you know, leasing out the space?
Well, we'll probably give you one when we come back to you for the budget, probably in April, May timeframe. But we can give you an update whenever you want.
And also, one thing to note, we do anticipate that revenues versus expenditures associated with this contract, we're basically, we envision that this is a separate budget unit within the Authority that you get a, you get an update on each month, just like you do EDIP dispersments. We anticipate that this is, this is something that you get reporting on with your financial overview every month regarding what your revenues over expenditures look like in this space.
Got it. Are any of these fees passed through to the tenants?
That is not something we specifically contemplated at this point. Our intent with this contract was basically just to get open, understanding that working towards state, working, understanding that we're working towards stabilization, and that 12 months from now, we have a much better idea of what it costs to operate this lab. The reality for us, though, is this is the first lab of its kind in Virginia Beach. There are other examples in the region that they are tethered, they are tethered directly to a higher ed offering, a program at ODU, for example, or EDMS, or specifically to a, or VCU, or specifically to our, to our healthcare provider. So this is the first standalone lab of its kind in the region, and so for us, the key is recognizing, it probably takes us a year to figure out what we don't know. It's the reason we, that we selected a sort of a well-known partner, not just in our local region, but in the broader region that is in this space to sort of help us through that piece. But coming back to your question, our thought, our thought was to just begin with basic rents, and then to amend the program as needed on an annual basis when we get to renewal.
My last question is maybe for Alex. Does our agreement with the landlord require us to pay more than basic rent? In other words, are we paying maintenance fees to the landlord as well for this space?
There is an additional element. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head what it is.
Okay.
I'm happy to pull that and note that up here.
All right, I think Dot had a question.
And Madam Chair, to your question, it's triple net lease, and it's basically that we would have, that we would share named it to the building.
Which of the two people from originally do we have coming to the space? Are the ones that need a lot, or is it people like the man who was doing the leg brace? Which, which two are coming?
Right off the top of the head, I would tell you, we, it's trying not to get ahead of our announcements, but I will tell you.
I think it's kind of important before we approve the money.
Sure it is. Certainly, we would anticipate the gentleman with the leg brace in Norfolk is an early adopter for us. I don't know that the majority of your Virginia Beach Challenge winners will enter the space at this point, given the lag between the time that we announced those winners and the opening of the lab. As said, we do, we're in communication with all of them presently, and we do anticipate that there'll be other marketing activities similar to a challenge that we'll initiate as soon as the space is open. This time, we anticipate broad success, given the fact that we're recruiting to the space that exists as opposed to recruiting to something that we're building.
And just to add on to that, Ms. Wood, Mr. Trower in our office has reached out to all the Challenge winners, and I think, and he just stepped in. I think we have about a half a dozen folks associated with that challenge we ran that expressed interest in possibly locating into the lab space. We've also notified the folks at Virginia Bio, which is the trade association from Virginia, and they have about 800 participants or affiliate organizations. Virginia, and they have about eight hundred participants or affiliate organizations associated with them, also the biohealth capital region. And we've also mentioned to some of the brokers in the community who specialize in biohealth, biotech, just to make them aware. So Mr. Trower is here if you have any specific questions about the Challenge winners. But I know that Alex from Light Switch Bio has expressed interest, the leg brace folks have expressed some interest, and some others.
I'm sorry, who has expressed interest? I can.
Alex from a company called Light Switch Bio.
Yeah, I remember him.
Yep. And also the folks with the leg brace product, they have also expressed an interest, and about four others.
Okay. What about the one that we were so excited about from, from Washington, then one from New York? Have you reached out to them?
Well, we've reached out to all of them. Cole reached out to everyone.
I don't remember their names.
Yeah.
So I have reached out to all of our Challenge winners, and we have a lot of success with them interested in coming into the space. The issue that I have encountered with these folks is that we need more specific details before they sign up for a contract. And so once we have this agreement, that will allow them to have some stability to see what they're signing up for. But these folks are great innovators, they're excited, and we've got a lot of them still interested.
Thank you, Cole.
To you, Madam Chair, we're here, Madam Chair, but also, I guess, Madam former Chair in this, in this case. We, we agree on the need to fill this space and begin recovering the authority's investment right away.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I guess following up on what Cole said, I'm not sure how we wouldn't have the information until today. I mean, normally, if you're building a building, you're going to start leasing it before you've got the building ready for your tenant. So we've got a little catching up to do, I think.
So, so Madam Chair, we can speak to that. We've had a, we've known exactly with the equipment list and what the proposed buildout for the space has been for more than a year. I think that what, I think that's a convenient thing to say. I mean, it's, it's unfortunate, but as we're, we're approaching eighteen months from the time that we announced our Challenge winners, I think, needless to say, that some of those winners are skeptical about our ability to actually pull this off. That said, we're glad to be here, looking forward to charge, charging forward and, and ensuring that we're, we're more successful in the future.
Thank you. I don't see any hands raised. Are there any comments or questions from Development Authority members? All right, seeing none and hearing none, the chair will call for a motion. The ask from staff is approval of a resolution, or a resolution approving Facility Logics' management agreement, the actual management agreement itself.
Push to approve.
And it sounded like that was Taylor. Can I get a second? Sounded like that was Naka. And Vicki, let's go to a roll call vote. William Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brunkie, are you still online? I think he's trying to call back in.
Yes.
Taylor Franklin? Penny Morgan?
Yes.
Lisa Murphy?
Yes.
Mike Standing?
Yes.
Joseph Strange?
Yes.
Ginturis Enseal?
Yes.
Ms. Dot Wood? We need more information before I feel comfortable voting on this, but thank you.
Sounds like that motion carried. The next item is request for approval of authorization of three hundred thousand dollars for additional studies for the dome site.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This one is fairly straightforward. We are continuing with the due diligence on development of the dome site. You all, you all will remember that this body approved two hundred thousand dollars while we were, for studies, while we were in negotiation. And we are now at the point where we are working towards the finish line, which would actually be issuance of bonds to carry the public obligation here associated with the project. We would ask for your support for an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars for additional studies associated with this project. Can I take the definitive of what those, what those studies are at this point? We just offer to you, though, that this is, this is a, as you all know, the, this project is anticipated, anticipated to be in excess of a three hundred million dollar investment. And so to the extent that we can't afford to miss, we can't afford to miss, it's as, as over a hundred million dollars worth of public commitment is associated, of a but-for public commitment is associated with the project. So we would simply ask for your ability to continue our due diligence to ensure that we're able to provide the certainty that both this body and our city council need for, for this project. Important to note, all of the money that we are spending here will be reimbursed to the authority at the time that the bonds are issued. So it's also important to note that we are, we are, we are conducting this due diligence and will be reimbursed for it at closing. Alex, is there anything you want to add to that?
Dot, just that these expenses were contemplated by the development agreement. There were additional studies and design work in the pre-development phase. We just wanted, rather than get a big pot of money at once, we were doing this as, as the project progresses, project is progressing, we're, they're thinking troubles in the ground end of the year or the next year.
Wow, that would be great. So I know at one point you talked about the environmental, is that part of these costs?
We, we, we anticipated that would be a work order. Sorry, Alex, I think I just jumped in front of you.
I was just going to say the same thing as you.
So we anticipate that this will cover the rest of the studies and sort of the soft costs, and in any event, all of these will be reimbursable to the authority?
Correct. When the, when the, when the bond issue, it's, it is supersized to include all of these, all of these costs, and it's a process for every large project going from the amphitheater to all the town center that we've, we've followed.
Alex, what happens if they don't close? Do we get our money back?
Not necessarily. If there are no bonds sold, it would be a discussion between your director and city manager's office to see if some of those funds could be included in another city bond issue to repay you. But there is no guarantee that it would happen.
That's a good question. Do we own the studies at the?
Yes.
So we could reuse those and repackage them if we needed to?
Yes.
That is correct. Taylor, you said there was no, you didn't, you couldn't say what the studies were. So, so only because, so first, and if I can, let me just say how it's, how exciting it is for me to be here, still talking about this project after what has been an incredibly difficult year for retail hospitality. Basically, every use that's proposed in this project has been impacted heavily over the last, now, well, coming on to twelve months. And so the fact that we're still here and still charging towards the finish line speaks to the strength of the project. And also, I just, if I can, want to express my thanks and gratitude for our development partners that are continuing to work with us on, on this project. That said, we don't anticipate, where we don't know specifically what these studies, what studies are coming down the pipe that we're going to need to get to closing. We don't, it's important for me to say, we don't anticipate that it's anything extraordinary that would not be required in the normal act of, of, of doing this type of project. So the chair mentioned environmental. I mean, certainly, we know that, that we've got to have a clean Phase One, and if it's required, clean Phase Two to deliver, to deliver a project like this. And when you consider that it's a give or take twelve-plus acre site at the oceanfront, it's a lot of real estate to cover. So we just want to make sure that we've got the capacity to deliver not just this, but whatever else comes down the pipe between now and closing. So just to follow my question, they don't have a Phase One yet? We do, would, would love to take the rest of that conversation offline, but yes.
Okay.
And I think maybe Alex had his hand up, but the thing to consider is that this includes growing parcels of land, right, Alex? So we started out, and now we've added on pieces, and we've had surveys and environmental and engineering costs for each of those components.
That is all, that is all correct, Madam Chair. And to Taylor's, Adam's point, should something come up that is not in a typical, is not typical, we'd come tell you guys about it before we started spending money. We want, the goal is to keep you informed as to what we're doing. But if we, you know, if we need money for, for parking analysis, that, that's anticipated, so we just do it, so long as it's under the, under the authorized fund.
All right. Any other questions from Development Authority members? Not seeing any hands. It is truly amazing that, given the impact to the hospitality, retail, entertainment industries, the past twelve months, that this would still be on track. It's a great thing. I agree with you, Taylor. All right. The chair will entertain a motion then to authorize the expenditure of up to three hundred thousand dollars in authority funds for additional studies related to the dome site.
So moved.
Dot?
I think.
Who is it? Second, Joe, is that you?
Mr. Strange.
All right, then we'll need a roll call vote, Vicki. David Byrne?
Yes.
William Brown?
Yes.
William Brunkie?
Yes.
Naka Chiazor?
Yes.
Taylor Franklin?
Yes.
Penny Morgan?
Yes.
Lisa Murphy?
Yes.
Mike Standing?
Ginturis Stain from both.
Joseph Strange?
He might be on cue.
Joseph Strange? He keeps going back on. Ginturis Enseal?
Yes.
Dot Wood? Ms. Dot Wood?
Yes, excited to be the first one along with Alex to serve.
Not sure who should be more scared about that.
That'll be a fun one to watch. I know we can't go back to the voice vote, but Bill, are you there, Bill Brunkie? We could see, I know Bill's had problems with audio. Yes, he was there, and I did hear his voice vote. Okay. What about Joseph Strange?
I said, yeah.
Thank you. We got to that time. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Sorry about that, I must have been on the, next item of business is economic development incentive programs. We've got three requests in this category. Taylor?
And so for rate, for, for Regulus Global, if I can, I'll turn it over to Ray White.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the authority, Ray White, this is Development Coordinator. Have before you today a EDIP request from Regulus Global. Next slide, please. Here's their disclosures before you. Will Somar Dyke is the CEO of the company, and you see the rest of the ownership management team there. LaRosa and Company are their CPAs, and their banking is with Capital Bank. Next slide. The owner of the property that they'll be leasing is Quality Court Partners with Bill DeStef and Bill Terry as owners, and they're banking through Atlantic Union Bank. Next slide, please. Regulus Global is in the logistics and procurement business. They were established 2012 here in Virginia Beach. They do a lot of global defense acquisition, various equipment, logistic services for companies all over the world. They also provide solutions in medical and humanitarian efforts. They do a lot of import-export compliance services. They deal with a lot of the government NATO countries and various other government contractors. They currently occupy twelve thousand five hundred square feet in our community at Ocean and South, and they're expanding in Virginia Beach. Next slide, please. As you can see from, from this graphic, the top picture on the right is their current headquarters facility, and the, the photo on the bottom right is the new area that they're leasing at twenty-six forty-one Quality Court. And you see on the graphic on the left, there are two sites that they'll be having here in Virginia Beach, both of them around the Oceanic Complex. The highlights is they're looking to lease twelve thousand square feet in the new facility, along with keeping their existing facility. They'll be creating thirty-one new jobs in that effort that will be located at both sites. The new facility is for storage, warehousing, and distribution, and this allows them to provide better service to a broader customer mix that they've obtained here recently. As you see on the right, the investment in the next thirty-six months broken down by the machinery and tools and furniture fixtures and equipment, a total of about two hundred and seventy thousand square feet. The jobs, as I mentioned earlier, thirty-one new full-time equivalent jobs, an average salary of seventy-five thousand dollars per job, excluding benefits. Their request is for a EDIP Part A grant, and recommendation is forty-six thousand five hundred dollars based on Part A Criteria II C of the EDIP policy. Their target industry sector is maritime and logistics. Next slide, please. So we're requesting for approval, resolution grant forty-six thousand five hundred dollars, EDIP Part A, funds to Regulus Global for creating thirty-one new jobs, paying between fifty thousand and one dollar to seventy-five thousand dollars per full-time equivalent job, and that's the range. uh job. And that's the range, uh, you know, within the category up to 75,000. So we're asking for approval of the 46 five uh for the EDIP. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ray? We do not see any hands, but we'll wait in case there's a delay. All right, hearing and seeing no questions, um uh the chair entertained a motion to request approval of an EDIP Part A award in the amount of $46,500 to Regulus Global.
Motion to approve, Bronky.
Good to hear you, Bill.
Yeah, thanks.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion from Mr. Bronky and a second from Ms. Wood. We'll need a roll call vote, Vicky.
David Byrne.
Yes.
William Brown.
Yes.
William Bronky.
Yeah.
Nekka Chisor.
Yes.
Taylor Franklin.
Yes.
Penny Morgan.
Yes.
Lisa Murphy.
Yes.
Mike Standing.
Yes.
Joseph Strange. Joseph Strange.
Yeah.
Gunter Rising Seal.
Yes.
Dot Wood. Ms. Dot Wood.
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Uh, I do have a statement from the company that they would like for me to to read for the authority to hear. We're calling your vote in approval today. Uh, it's from their CEO, Will Somer Dyke. And he says, thank you to the Virginia Beach Development Authority and city leaders for their recognition and support. For the last nine years, Regulus Global has been a rapidly growing business, executing a medical, expeditionary and national security business worldwide. We do that proudly from our Virginia Beach headquarters where we have the privilege to employ and support our local community such as recently securing much-needed medical supplies for Centerra, VCU and Chesapeake General. Thank you.
That's great. And we, uh, if anybody from the company is listening, we really appreciate having you here in Virginia Beach and all the good work that you do. All right, next item of business is a request for approval of resolution authorizing the amendment of the audit requirements for five of our prior EDIP Part E awards.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, before I dive into this one, I'd just like to express on behalf of our department um thanks to our city auditor, Lyndon Ramirez, for his uh uh basically what was an off-schedule request for us. And to give you all an idea of how Lyndon uh sort of runs his office, he builds an audit calendar for the year, which uh which is presented to city council, approved, which talks about all of the work that his team will take on during the year. This um, the work that we ask him to do associated with EDIP Part E wasn't a was an addition to that list that was unscheduled. And so um, to the extent that I can, I just want to express my thanks to him and to his team for their assistance in uh in basically what was what proved to be a fairly heavy lift for all of us. What's great to mention is his audit of our program is complete. And so um, he is, he has closed out his uh his audit. Uh, we uh, there was a, there was a management meeting with Lyndon and his team that the uh, the city manager's office and I attended. Uh, since then, Lyndon has issued his letter. We received that letter end of last week. Um, I'm diving into it uh this week, but but the long and short of it is uh the uh Lyndon's support of our program throughout the process and the ability that it offered us to course correct to ensure that we were meeting your objection in city councils was very important. That said, Lyndon and his team still have everything else on their audit calendar that they've got to complete this year. So it's important that we let him wrap this up and that he move and that we move on. There are some small sums outstanding related to EDIP Part E. As you all will remember, we received the app, we received almost 500 applications for our 200, for our 2.5 million in total funding. We knew that we were oversubscribed. However, we started working through this. You all will remember, we immediately saw that many of the businesses, many of the smallest businesses um in our community that most needed this support, um were not accustomed to uh to providing the the level of information that a public grant program requires. Um, Lyndon saw this right away. We saw it. We worked with his office um to put together the plan that you all will remember. There was a recapture agreement that we added in the in the about in the second month of reviewing these applications to allow us to expedite um payment. That worked and we have been able to advance all of the complete applications that we have. That said, your original resolution requires that every grant application that we fund over $9,000 must be reviewed by the city auditor. Um, we are at a place where where that is perhaps not practical. Um, and specifically also, what we found is that the recapture agreement that every applicant must now sign gives us the certainty that all of city councils requirements and all of your requirements are being met by protocol. So that said, what we're asking for today is the ability to amend five resolutions that are ready for payment, save for the fact that the auditor has not um has not approved them. Following that, and these will all come back to you, we would like to move through the remaining funds. We we've given everyone, um, we have a pool of more, we have a pool of approved applications that will get us to the maximum funding for EDIP that we have outstanding, which is just less than half a million dollars. That said, we would like to, following this action, move through that on a first-come, first-served basis to until that, till those funds are expired. We will bring those back to you. You have already approved these. We will bring these back to you for a subsequent uh briefing so that you know exactly what's being funded and exactly when the funds are being expended. That's really a secondary action. That said, as it relates to this action, we're we're asking that we have the ability to move forward with with the funding of these five.
All right. And just so that everybody knows, because I'm not sure the materials were available, what are the five entities that we're talking about so that people can abstain to the extent they need to?
I will, Madam Chair, I apologize. Even I do not have those five files in front of me. I'll have to uh to yield to Vicky and or Sean, who I know we're on, who I know we're on the call, on the uh, on the call. And or Alex, you might have those in front of you. If uh if not, I can get them quickly.
I have them in front of me.
Thank you.
These were corrections, indoor, skydiving. I'm trying to maneuver here.
And so, Vicky, when you say corrections, is corrections the name of a company or the, are you saying these were corrections to previous applications?
These were approved on one of the three resolutions. And we found out um, once we were trying to expend the funds that these were either approved for rent and they were actually taxes, utilities, et cetera, or the amount was incorrect.
And so the the name of the company, so what you're saying is you've amended those. So the first company is?
Indoor skydiving.
And then number two is?
La Rock Doing Business as the UPS Store, UPS Store. The third business is Sakura Poke Bowl. The fourth is Stone Bridge M J. And the last one is Waffles and Company.
And so, Vicky, um, for those, as a result of my, for me, they're doing work for the applicant or the landlord of the applicant, I'll be abstaining from La Rock Inc. From the iFly application and from Sakura Poke Bowl.
Any other extensions?
Not for.
All right.
And Madam Chair, we will, we will have letters reflecting all of these extensions and including Mr. Standing's extension earlier filed with the authorities required by the statute.
Thank you, Alex. Any any comments on this from any of the um members of the Authority? I don't see any hands. So Taylor, just to clarify then, there's a approximately $500,000 left in the EDIP Part E program. And we'll be going back through uh the previously approved list or people who have been waiting in the queue and haven't been approved.
That that is correct. And we'll and we'll move through these on a first-come, first-served basis. The the and the big thing is we needed to, so the good news is, um, at this point, you've you funded in the neighborhood of 600 grand applications that total about six and a half million dollars. So so what I would tell you, that's that's where we are at this point. Uh, and and to say that this has been uh, that this support is was needed and has been an important part of helping our local businesses survive the pandemic is an understatement. But the response that our team has uh and the gratitude that our team has received from the program has just been overwhelming. And so I I I do want to take a moment to thank you all for your support of our small business community over the past few months. Fast forwarding though, now that we've, we've had, we've uh, we got to December 31st, which is when the CARES Act money expired. And we had an opportunity to catch our breath, check up, find out exactly where we are. And so we're at the point now where we really just want to close, we want to ensure that we help the maximum possible number of businesses get this last bit of money out the door, close out the program and uh and hopefully uh hopefully at that point, we're seeing our uh our community return to business as normal.
That's certainly the hope. And then I imagine at some time this fiscal year, we'll get an an update or report on all the businesses and some of the demographics that we've helped go through the EDIP Part E and the CARES Act awards.
Yes, and in fact, Madam Chair, I'll be providing some of that information to the city council this afternoon. The important thing to note here is, um, from a tracking standpoint, we've hit every one of our industrial sectors. Uh, about 70% of this money has gone to reach some some provider in retail, hospitality and or the restaurant business, which which obviously fits well within those two. Um, we have touched every zip code in the city of Virginia Beach. Um, and like I say, we're we're over $6 million out the door at this point. So uh, it's just one of, uh, and this is just the funding that has been administered by the Development Authority. This does not count the additional $2 million that city council appropriated to list through the for bbrelief.org. So just know um Virginia Beach, so that you all and our city council have been not just regional leaders, but leaders in the Commonwealth and in the broader region of the mid-Atlantic in this space. And uh, we so appreciate your support of our business community.
Yeah, and I think it's important to note, especially with the CARES Act funds, you know, people should be interested in what their locality did with the CARES Act funds that they received. Uh, and Virginia Beach has done an amazing job through city councils guidance and authorization of making sure a big chunk of that goes back to not only businesses, but to nonprofits and individuals who have suffered uh due to the COVID pandemic as well. So it's a great position for us to be in and helping to uh to hand out those funds. All right, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the request authorizing the amendment of the audit requirements. And I assume that would be an amendment going forward. Correct? Since the audit has concluded?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so it would it would apply to these five and then any of the ones you've got waiting in the queue at this point?
With with the certainty that we'll bring them all back to you before pay.
Great, okay. And uh, can I get a motion on that resolution?
So moved.
I got it.
So we had Dr. Brown, a second from Dot. And roll call vote, please, Vicky.
David Byrne. David Byrne. David Byrne.
Yes.
William Brown.
Yes.
William Bronky.
Yes.
Nekka Chisor.
Yes.
Taylor Franklin.
Yes.
Penny Morgan.
Yes.
Lisa Murphy.
Yes.
Mike Standing.
Yes.
Joe Strange.
Yeah.
Gunter Rising Seal.
Yes.
Dot Wood.
And Vicky, that for me, that would be yes with the three extensions.
Did we hear, okay, did we hear from Dot Wood?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all. The next item is a request for approval of a resolution establishing the district improvement program.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, this is uh, this is a program that we've been talking about for some time uh that uh that basically can be considered an extension of the uh Divide Improvement Grant. We saw that, we saw the impact that that the Divide Program created. Um, and we we found that there was a real desire by other districts within the city to utilize the plan. So this is an attempt to expand that offer. Devin, if we could see the next slide? One thing to note, Joe? Looks like my, I am out of order here, but I'll just run with you guys. So uh as I mentioned, similar to the Divide matching grant program, uh this is based on it, uh, this is our intent here is to induce capital investment consistent with our, with the adopted goals of the specific district. And this is important to note, we're not going to, our plan is not to telegraph to a specific portion of the city what their goals should be. We believe that this, that the, that the district should define the goals that they are, that they are seeking and that the businesses within those should have the ability to uh to to administer, to basically conform to that. We're beginning with a $100,000 appropriation that has already come to uh first our department, but now to the authority. Um, it's important to note, districts can be anywhere in the city. We're not tightly defining where districts can be. We're just, we're just asking that there is a district formed like the vibe, like the artery, like the Atlantic Avenue Association, that would, that could provide some definition of what the goals of that, what goals are for business, for business development in that part of the city. Uh, the applicants will work with uh with my office and with um Strategic Growth Area to do um for assistance in defining the program where for their district. But then we'll work with the districts to develop individual applications to ensure that we develop, that we deliver on their goals. So who can be a district? Not-for-profits, civic leagues, community associations, business associations. We're not, again, we're, we're doing our very best here to let, to let the community define what it is they're trying to achieve here. Next slide, please, Devin. So it's important to note, this is very much a small business program. Uh, we're looking for businesses with fewer than 50 employees. We're looking for, um, we're, we're of course require that applicants are current on a licensing taxes and fees and they must and a district, an applicant must be part of an approved district. Uh, we're not looking for chain businesses with more than three locations, national franchises, places of worship or residential uses. Next slide, please. I'm not going to read these one by one. I'm not going to read these one by one, but here is a, just a quick list of the types of qualifying improvements, and this is not an exhaustive list, this is just, this sort of illustrate the type of things that businesses can use. Really, we're looking for any type of investment that's going to create a quantifiable increase in the value of the real estate. Devin? As I mentioned, our current year funding is $100,000, and we're considering requests between $1,000 and $10,000. We're only allowing one grant per business per year, so long as funding is available. This is a first-come, first-served, it's not an entitlement. And anyone submitting a grant, submitting an application must allow for audit by the city after funding. Devin? How are we going, how are we going to pick the winners, is I guess the answer. Applications will be submitted here in my office, once they're created. We'll establish a grant review committee to meet quarterly. The grant review committee will evaluate and make recommendations, but not approvals. Resolutions will be presented for approval of payment. The grant review committee to consist of, at minimum, a city council representative or liaison, the city manager, a deputy city manager, or their designee, the development director or designee, and the planning director or designee. It's important to note that the reason we're saying this group is making a recommendation and not approval, we do anticipate that all of these approvals come back to this body for approval prior to funding. Next slide. Funds are dispersed after demonstrated performance. So this is important, this is a performance-based program, so this is a reimbursement request must be submitted to the office, here in my office, so we can evaluate them. And you can see, I won't read all of this, but we are looking for the, one thing to note, we are looking for these improvements to be completed within six months. However, we recognize that if there's anything COVID has taught us, it's that things happen and delay, and there are sometimes delays that are unforeseen. So we are making an accommodation where one extension may be requested by the applicant. Next slide. With that, we're very excited about this program. We know that there are wealth of companies and potential applicants that are waiting in the wings to get started with this, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you, Taylor. Any questions for Taylor?
This is Bill, I have a question.
Go ahead, Bill.
Thank you. Just a quick observation, and it's somewhat related, but I don't know if it's directly related, so off-course, just redirect. I'm looking at the map of the different zones that was included in our materials, specifically with the special economic growth areas, strategic growth areas, and suburban focus areas. I've noticed that those areas identified in the map all overlap the economic opportunity zones that were created a couple of years ago. I know this is distinctly different from economic opportunity zone credits, but do you have any information about the investment that's taken place in the economic opportunity zones, since they do overlap with this particular group of zonings?
So, independent of the depth of this program, the long and short of this is no, I mean, I'll tell you, we've not, it's interesting, we've not seen investment in the opportunity zones here locally to the extent that some of the larger metro, major metros have up and down the East Coast. That said, though, it's starting, we're seeing that it's starting to come in. Anecdotally, we think that some of this is related to the fact that in most major metros, the opportunity zones that were adopted are in areas that are either economically challenged or blighted. That's not necessarily the case here in Virginia Beach. What we're seeing here in Virginia, and so we saw a lot of activity there early on, what we're now seeing here, also, it's important to note, any of our opportunity zones overlay industrial areas as opposed to opportunities for housing redevelopment, which would make us somewhat unique. And so, we're seeing real interest, it's interesting that you asked, we're seeing real interest over the last six to eight months. I think that we'll be reporting something to you within 60 days that would, that might be a kickoff to a broader, what could be a broader industrial application of the opportunities and statute. But that said, it's not something that we have seen, we've certainly seen use, I don't want to suggest that we haven't seen use, but a lot of the use that we've seen has been single-member, single-developer use. What we're seeing in the broader application is the ability to be a tenant user in the zone and still take advantage of the opportunity to pack park capital gains there. We have not seen nearly as much of that, or at least it's not flown through our office. So that said, if you could, give me, it's interesting, give me the, I won't say the February meeting, but by the March meeting, I think we'll have something very interesting to talk about here.
Okay, I'd like to have more follow-up discussion on our use of the opportunity zones and how we might leverage that as our land opportunities start, continue to shrink.
We, yes.
That's all for me, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Taylor, did you say we've been allocated $100,000?
There was $100,000 in the budget ordinance that flowed over at the beginning of the fiscal year. Of course, at the beginning of the fiscal year, we were, I mean, we were knee-deep, actually probably waist-deep in trying to get EDIP Party and CARES Act money out the door. Now that that's done, we're coming back, and just additional $100,000 we can pump into our small business community. So we're all in on getting this done quickly.
And how will these grants be advertised?
I did not get that question, Madam Chair, was that, how will they be advertised?
How will the grants be, yeah, how will we get the news out?
So what I can tell you is, we have a number of districts that have already self-identified that are waiting in the wings. Pending your approval, we'll begin immediately developing applications with those associations. We are leaning on the associations to get the word out to their members about application, simply because obviously that application is germane to that association.
Got it, thank you. Any other questions from authority members? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion on the request for approval of a resolution establishing the district improvement plan.
No moved.
Sounded like Dr. Brown?
Yes.
Okay, and can I get a second?
Second.
Brunkie, second.
Ty, it sounded like Nekka was first.
That's right.
All right, thank you, and Bill. Vicki, can we go ahead and please take a roll call vote?
David Byrne?
Yes.
William Brown?
Yes.
William Brunkie?
Yeah.
Nekka Chiazor? Nekka?
Yes.
Taylor Franklin? Taylor Franklin?
Yes.
Penny Morgan?
Yes.
Lisa Murphy?
Yes.
Mike Standing? Mike Standing?
Yeah, abstaining. Abstaining.
Sir. Joseph Strange?
Letter will be provided.
Yes.
Geun Duris and Seal?
Yes.
Dot Wood?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that motion carries. Next item is administrative information. I don't know if any commissioners have any comments or priorities that they'd like to mention at this time. I think for our virtual meeting, we've done a pretty good job, a few glitches, carry on business despite the emergency. And I appreciate everybody's time and patience, and just know that staff has put a lot of time and effort into making sure that this went off with as few hitches as possible, given the circumstances. And I thank IT, Jamie Weaver, for being on the call to help out just in case we got into a bind. All right, with that, I'll kick it over to Taylor for the director's report.
Madam Chair, I think I've talked enough today, I just want to echo what you, your comments just then, to thank everyone for their patience while we worked through delivery of a virtual meeting, and thank my team for their hard work on ensuring that we were able to do this today.
Read, any comments from any commissioner?
Yeah.
Nekka, was that you?
It wasn't, but I'm glad you called me. Madam Chair, I'd like to echo Taylor's words. I thank you and the economic development staff for putting together this virtual meeting, a really great way to kick off a new year. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm looking for hands, I don't see any hands. And with that, the chair will go ahead and adjourn the meeting, let everybody get back to their regular day jobs.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you all for participating, and I think we'll probably be virtual next month as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.